My first time.
Do you think they're gonna be okay?
Yes.
I mean, this one's easy. Clara Ray.
Clara Ray, that one, that one. I won't struggle with that one.
Are you gonna handle it? I can't do it.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. We're so glad you guys are here. Where's Holden? Is Holden in here? Holden? Okay, Holden, will you come down and help me with one thing? Awesome. We won't get, you don't have to help me just yet, but I still want you to come down right now. Is that cool? All right, Holden, how are ya? Everybody doing good back to school? Does having Monday off just totally mess us all up? That's how we feel, too. I keep thinking that tomorrow's Tuesday, and it's not. So, good thing I showed up tonight and came at the right time. Well, we're so glad that you guys are all here. This is our first Student Citizen of the Month opportunity for 2020. And this year is also Gilbert's Centennial Year. So, we're celebrating Gilbert's 100th birthday all year long. Our actual birthday will be on July 6th. And so, I keep teasing everybody, we're gonna have a birthday party for Gilbert in San Diego. Everybody's okay with that, right? It's just a little bit cooler on July 6th. But we have so many things planned, and I noticed a lot of schools and teachers did, on the 100th day of school, use that as an opportunity to celebrate Gilbert's 100th birthday. So, I loved that tie. I saw a lot of great pictures on social media and other things that the schools were doing. Gilbert is a great community, full of wonderful people. But there is no harder job and one that deserves more praise from all of us than our teachers. And so, we just wanna extend our appreciation to all of the teachers that are in the room, and also administrators. So, stand up, teachers. Stand up so we can recognize you. Awesome. Thank you so much. It's Tuesday night. They didn't have to be here. And they're here. So, I'm dedicated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to our kids in Gilbert. We have 80,000 school-aged children in Gilbert. So, these kids are an important part. Holden, you are an important part of Gilbert. We're grateful that you're here. I need your help. Are you ready? Okay, so we do, we have sponsors, and it's Sal's Gilbert Pizza. Who's been to Sal's? Oh, yeah. They put pasta on pizza, you guys. You cannot go wrong with pasta on pizza. So, good. And then Culinary Dropout is also one of our sponsors. So, your job is to pick a teacher's name out of this bucket and that teacher. So, these are all the teachers that submitted our kids' applications tonight. And we're giving them a $100 Culinary Dropout gift card. So, you get to pick the teacher that wins. And if you don't pick your teacher, they're still gonna love you, okay? Just pick whatever teacher it's meant to be. All right, Holden. Drum roll. Mrs. Bent from Gilbert Classical Academy. Is Mrs. Bent here? No? Okay, we'll make sure Mrs. Bent gets that. Thank you. Holden, up top. High five. Okay, you're gonna come back up in just a few minutes. Thank you. I'd love to introduce our amazing council. I forgot to tell you, I'm the mayor, Jen Daniels. That's why I get to hold the mic. We have our new vice mayor, new, brand-new, just put in as vice mayor just a couple of weeks ago, Scott Anderson. Are you reading the names tonight, Scott, for the first time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the assignments of the vice mayor, is to read the names of the kids. And it's always like a phonetic spelling lesson. So, we'll be patient with them the first time, the first time only. And then council member Amy Yentes, here. Council member Bridget Peterson. Council member Eddie Cook. And council member Jared Taylor. I usually save this for the end, but council member Taylor's also has just celebrated a birthday. So, I'm not gonna make everybody sing to you, but just know that we're cheering you on. Birthdays are good. And then council member Jordan Ray. Your family was so excited that you got, that's good. My family boos now. And they're like, oh. Yeah. There's a special member of the Ray family getting a Student Citizen Award tonight, so we're excited about that. All right, we do this really efficiently and in three groups. So, the first group is our students who go to elementary school between the A to J. It's actually Ashland Ranch Elementary to Islands Elementary. So, if you're our Student Citizen and you go to one of those elementary schools, we need you to come on down and go hang out right there with council member Ray. He's really nice. So, we have Valerie here. Valerie is the mayor's assistant. She's amazing. She makes life much easier for me. And she's gonna take pictures that we'll put on Flickr and Facebook later tonight. But you're also welcome to come down, and that's the best area to come take the picture when it's your child's turn. Sound good? All right, we'll show you how to do it, and we'll do it really fast. Council member Anderson, you're up.
All right. Be patient, please.
Gentle be kind.
Be gentle. First, from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Olivia Padilla. From Bridges Elementary, Brynlee Johnson. From Burke Elementary, Olivia Hicks. Special star from Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Clara Ray.
Okay, Clara, before we take your picture, I think you have, we're giving her a point of personal privilege since she has to give up her dad a couple nights every week. But can you, do you wanna tell us who your teachers are?
Yeah.
Have them stand up, yeah.
Okay, so I have Miss Cruz.
Miss Cruz, stand up.
I have Miss Ward.
Miss Ward, stand up.
Mrs. Boat. Miss Wilson and Miss Growthy.
The best of the best.
Yeah. And they all came. That's so cool. They must really like you. I get to go to Carroll Ray in a couple of weeks, and I think I'm getting a pie to my face. I understand that's part of, I lost a bet or something. We're not really sure.
From Chaparral Elementary, Brooke Hernandez. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Francesca Bessling. From Eduprise School, Sidney Witcher. From Gateway Point Elementary, Avaline Forgone. From Higley Traditional Academy, Reagan O'Connell. And from Houston Elementary, Hadley Wine.
All right, that completes Group One. Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students, so come on down. We also know that it's a school night, so if your child's already received their award, feel free, if you would need to leave or would like to leave, now would be a good time, a little transition. So, just letting you, letting you get out early if you want.
Okay. From Leading Edge Academy, Santiago Lucero. From Mesquite Elementary, Juliet Hurst. From Neely Traditional Academy, Olive Evans. From Oak Tree Elementary, Riley Amaker. Good catch, good catch. Yeah. From Patterson Elementary, Alexandra Strozuski. From Pioneer Elementary, Heath Neme. From Pioneer Elementary, also Leah Schrogler. From Pioneer, Plia Del Ray Elementary, Brody Borchers. All right. From Riggs Elementary, Alyssa Vesco. From Santana Elementary, Holden Yates. From Settlers Point Elementary, Bella Reedlinger. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Alia Griego. From Spectrum Elementary, Jaslyn Casillas. From Town Meadows Elementary, London Rohr. Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Lily Espinoza. From Weinberg Elementary, Hudson Hayes. Also, from Weinberg Elementary, Brielle Laritzen.
All right, Group Three is our junior high and high school students. For those of you who are leaving, thank you for coming and have a great night. Glad you guys brought your kids down. That was awesome. Now, junior high and high school, go hang out with council member Ray.
Yeah, that's a practice name for me. You ready? Group Three? From Campo Verde High School, Emma Hartzhorn.
From Canyon Valley High School, Abraham Syriaco. Cooley Middle School, Shaylee R. Thompson. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Alexia Lemming. From Gilbert High School, Samantha Jansen. From Greenfield Junior High, Azumi Murphy. From Higley High School, Spencer Funkhausen. Mesquite Junior High, Kobe Bradley. From Payne Junior High, Cadence Allord. Allord A. There isn't an accent on the E. If that was French, it would be an accent. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Finally, from South Valley Junior High, Brooklyn Reedhead.
Please do. I can tell he's dressed for the job.
I wouldn't have asked you except for I knew you knew how.
Good evening everyone, welcome to our January 21st, 2020. I'm going to get used to saying that. Town council meeting, grateful that you all are here today and participating. We have already done our presentation of the Student Citizen of the Month awards, and that leads us to our invocation and pledge of allegiance, and we will turn that over to Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. By way of introductions, we have PAC 282 here tonight, and we're grateful for them. I'm going to go over here and have them introduce themselves, and then Jonathan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So give us your name, and if you have a Cub Scout rank, tell us what that is, okay? And Mayor, we'll also give them a pocket copy of the Constitution that we give to all the Scouts that are visiting here tonight.
Hello, my name is Riley Beek, and we are an Arrow, our den is Arrow of Light.
I'm Drake Sheehofer, and we are an Arrow of Light.
I'm Timothy Hoffman, and I'm an Arrow of Light.
I am Alex Wells, and I am Arrow of Light.
I'm Joshua Mujigood, and I'm an Arrow of Light.
I'm Jonathan Jansen, and I am also an Arrow of Light.
I'm Cub Master Dan Morton of PAC 282, and I'm very honored to lead these young men as they transition from Cub Scouts into Boy Scouts this year.
Okay, Jonathan, why don't you come step forward right here, and if everyone will please rise, the flag is over here to our right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
Mayor, anything you'd like to leave with our Cub Scouts tonight?
Thank you for being servant leaders in Gilbert. You guys are doing great, great work. I see Scouts all over doing good things, and you are part of that, so carry on.
Thank you.
Unfortunately Rabbi Ash was unable to join us at the last minute, and so I have asked Valerie Schafer to give our invocation.
Thank you Mayor and Council, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful rainy day in Gilbert. We praise you for all the gifts you've given our community, including the leadership of our Mayor and Council. Lord, please bless them and be with them and bless their families. We ask for your wisdom and for your peace, and in your son's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Valerie. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Entes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. I dropped the gavel, which I never use when I was up here, so sorry. It's my understanding we have no requests to speak from the citizens this evening, and we have no presentations or proclamations, so that takes us directly to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Yes Mayor, we have requests to pull one item, item number three, and with that I will move approval of items one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Peterson, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. Agenda item three, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to just vote separately on this. I probably said my piece on this one, just wanted to vote separate, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on agenda item three?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote, thank you. That concludes our consent agenda and carries us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests to speak on public hearing items from, I don't see any from the public? Any from the council? Okay, I will open the public hearing on agenda items 10, 11, 12, and 13. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Anderson, you are the secret sauce. That's two meetings in a row that have been really efficient. No offense, former Vice Mayor.
You know, I dearly love you and your family, and that could change, you know?
Thank you. I wasn't calling you out specific, just any of the former Vice Mayors. Are there any boards, commissioner, committee reports from the council?
Mayor, Planning Commission will be hearing the general plan for a second time tomorrow evening as part of the process to hear the general plan three times before it comes to the town council, and that meeting will be held here tomorrow evening, Muni One, 6 o'clock, Planning Commission right here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
We have now been meeting three times with the Citizens Transportation Task Force, with great leadership from the town staff. I think our representatives have gained a great insight into what's going to be happening in Gilbert in the future to make us a city of the future, and we will have another meeting tomorrow, and I think we're going to get into the real mechanics of things tomorrow. Is that true Suzanne? Yeah, so we're looking forward to future meetings with that task force and being able to work towards some solutions.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Being none others, we do have several future meetings, and I actually would like to add one additional item to this list, and that is, I'd like us as a council to explore a possible formation of a military and veterans committee within the town. I've had some conversations with the individuals who put on Veterans Day every year in collaboration with the town, and because of some of the changes in how we operate as an organization, I'd like to see us possibly, and I'm not, I'd let, open to lots of ideas from the council, but possibly form a military and veterans committee for the town that would oversee some of those programs moving forward. So I will pass that down and ask for signatures, thank you. Report from Town Manager on current events? No current events from our Town Manager. Report from the council.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I see that there's a creation of Subcommittee to Review Town Municipal Codes. I know we're not going to talk about it, but someone that submitted that, can we just understand the scope of the idea there?
I'll be glad to. So as we were going through the LDC code, it was clear that there was some overlap in some areas, and we have not addressed looking at the municipal codes for over 20 years. It's been a very, very long time. So it's, again, it'll be a painstaking process.
Looking at the whole corpus of it?
The entire municipal, yeah. It's going to be painful, but it hasn't been addressed in over 20 years.
Thank you.
Are you okay with that?
Well, I just wanted to understand it. It sounds painful, so good luck. I got another year, but I'm happy to help.
Yeah, I think timing on that will be important, how, when we start that, and the effort. We probably will need to break that down, I think, into smaller pieces in order to accomplish that. To be fair, I do think that we review our municipal codes, both for, you know, legal processes and others, and we're good about adding codes, but now would be a great opportunity for us to examine maybe what might be outdated and/or in conflict with another policy from a town perspective. So, thank you for doing that. All right, report from council on current events? Being none, I have two. This Thursday is the Town's Digital State of the Town. We have two showings, one at 5:00 and one at 6:00, and both are sold out, which is awesome. And when I say sold out, the tickets were free, but people are coming, so we're grateful for that. Yes, and so glad that people are taking interest. The good news is that our State of the Town is available online, and will be available on Thursday evening immediately after it's shown at Harkins Theater, and so we obviously want our residents to be engaged that way. I also wanted to thank the Chamber for our Good Government Series breakfast that we had this morning, and the opportunity to meet with business leaders and hear about their priorities for 2020 and how we can collaborate together, so great work. And I actually have one more, so sorry, I have three, not two. And that is that Councilmember Taylor has recently celebrated a birthday, and... How old are you, you councilor? I'm just teasing you. You don't have to answer that, but we have a birthday card for you, and we have cupcakes to celebrate, so happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
The town appreciates you, this council appreciates you, so thank you.
One more trip around the sun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The alternative is not better.
That's true.
That's what I understand.
It's nice.
All right, with all of that, meeting adjourned, thank you for being here.